Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to -- I guess it's morning, isn't it? It just feels like afternoon to me. It's 12 hours already. I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting study session of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. Today is December 10th. The time is 10:00 a.m. And please stand for the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Okay, we'll take our roll call again. Mrs. Kirby, please.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Fellerberg.
George Jackson.
And Bonnie Snead, all members of the present family corps. For the study session agenda, item 3A is an information discussion only. Number one is -- and two, number one is a strategic plan continued with technology improvements and integration.
Thank you. Good morning. Tom Clark and Kyle Ross are going to provide the presentation. First will be the pillar on technology for the strategic plan, and then Kyle and Tom will work together talking about future-ready schools and where technology plays into all of that.
Hey, Dr. Peterson. Good morning. Morning, board members. We have also a hard copy handout of the presentation if you'd like to use that to jot your thoughts down as we do this. I have to say, I'm really excited to be having this conversation. You know, I spent a lot of time thinking about things like that and what the future looks like for kids because that's really what's exciting about, you know, technology in the classroom and technology in education. So you recognize a couple of slides here that this is a timeline that we're following. So today's the day for technology improvements and integration. These are the guiding questions, as you recall, that we've been using throughout the discussion about the strategic plan. Where are we, where do we want to be, and how are we going to get there? So again, this is part three, strategic area for technology improvements and integration. I want to start with some celebrations. This is a little bit about where we've come from and where we're at from the last big technology initiative that the district has had. We've implemented a lot of classroom technology across all campuses. You know, you've heard me reference before the technologies that we standardize on for every classroom, you know, using smart boards in the elementary, middle schools, projectors, audio enhancement systems, you know, Wi-Fi across the district. We have also greatly developed, or we've developed and greatly expanded our online learning program under the leadership of Dr. Duhman. And, you know, we're serving students both within the district at all five of our high schools as well as students from outside the district. We've done a lot of work to upgrade technology infrastructure, and that goes from, you know, all the switches and routers to everything in between, all a lot of the hardware, the servers that support a lot of the information systems that we have, make things work efficiently and make it a good resource for people. We've done a lot to increase digital content for students. You know, my favorite example is a discovery education, but that's certainly not the only resource that we put in place. But, you know, that was the first truly digital curriculum adoption that we've done, and all signs are pointing to us to continue heading in that direction. You know, my opinion, I think, you know, the days of us buying any textbooks for classrooms are over. It's, you know, it's worse than a new car. Once it leaves the parking lot, it's already out of date, and the value of it goes down sharply when you leave that parking lot. We've also done a lot of work on the professional development side, and it's evolved over time as the needs and time demands of teachers have changed. We have a mighty core of educational technology teachers on assignment or technology coaches who are covering 30 campuses. And so basically, we have one covering elementary, one covering middle, and one covering high school, although there's a lot of carryover and collaboration on that regard. So that has caused some creativity in how you deliver that, but still at the very core of that for them is in classroom professional development, working side by side with teachers, helping them to integrate things, do modeling lessons and things like that. We've also moved more towards online resources, of course. There are lots of things out there available for the education community that do not cost anything. And we've also been creating some of our own using live online professional development as well as making recorded resources for teachers to use. So teachers do not have time, you know, the days of sit and get after school for professional development are long gone, and teachers don't have time for it. And it's, you know, if we try to have one of those events, the tendency is usually not very high just because of that. And there's so many other ways to get what they need doing electronically. So those are some celebrations for the district. We also have done a lot of making connections with our stakeholders, gathering information about what people are looking for as the next iteration of where the district goes with technology. And I'm not going to read all of those to you, but, you know, when you're talking about more, more infrastructure, more computers, more hardware, you know, so it's a very consistent theme as we work through the groups of stakeholders that we've talked to, meeting with department chairs. Every teacher should have a laptop. Teach your technology faster and wider broadband, lots of Chromebooks. So, you know, there's a, you can pick up the theme very quickly there. With the site visits that some of the SLT has been doing this year, gathering feedback from teachers and staff at site meetings, also a very consistent theme, people want better and more of what they have. You know, so it's not that we, that they like to have it anymore, it's that now they need it in order to do their job effectively. So there's been a big shift there. You have this handout on your, handout that you have there, it should be the very front page. And I think it would probably help if we went through the rest of the presentation to put some of that in better context, if that's okay with you guys. But feel free to stop me if you have any questions on the way. But basically, we're framing this within the strategic plan, identifying targets of excellence, how we're going to measure that, what are the performance actions that need to occur, and what are there, if there are budget implications for that, what are they? So moving forward, we are framing the conversation around a framework called Future Ready, which you've heard a little bit about earlier in the year. We discussed it. Really, Future Ready is not a technology plan. A key component of that is providing access to digital content, making our students digital learners. You know, we're not getting ready for the 21st century. We're in the 21st century. So focusing on the future, you know, we're being immersed in a, in an IT or a digital world, if you will, on every front, and some of it's happening so fast we didn't even realize it's happening. Just to give you an example, we are having an opportunity with Google to provide some field trips to students using a virtual reality experience where kids will put on the VM headgear and experience a live field trip, if you will, or expedition, I think they're calling it, you know, anywhere across the globe. So I think that the message there is that that's just a sample of what's coming and what's coming to education. So it's really very exciting. Each one of those gears represents a component of the Future Ready framework that needs to be addressed, and we'll get into the details of what those are in a minute. Again, I want to just emphasize accomplishments. I don't need to read all these to you. You know, we've done everything from update policies for BYOD and implemented BYOD at a number of our sites where that's being used effectively in the classroom. We have thousands of students every day that are using our wireless resources for that We took some language from a publication that went out from the district shortly after the first iteration of technology from the old, I shouldn't say, the previous capital override. Basically, the message of the brochure was to communities and, community and stakeholders that this is what we're doing with the resources that you have provided. So that language is purposefully, you know, might look a little outdated, but it is purposefully there to just talk about what the focus was. It really was focusing on the classroom and equipping classrooms with modern tools for teaching and learning. Along that line, I just wanted to put a little perspective into the changing landscape, you know, for technology integration in the classroom. For a long time, well before 1998, actually, you know, we've been sending kids to the computer lab to do a math program or, you know, a reading program or do a writing exercise, and it was very isolated, you know. So I don't really teach with technology. I send my kids to the computer lab to use technology. That started to change as we were able to deploy mobile technology, and, you know, none of us were expecting the wave that came with the iPad and that generation of technology. It just came like a tidal wave, you know. And so we have made a big shift there. The Future Ready framework is basically moving to an environment where students have rich digital content that they have access to throughout the learning experience and across the curriculum. There's really no area of curriculum left that is untouched by, you know, having a technology component to it. And Dr. Peterson and I and Dr. Ross attended the Future Ready Summit that was held here in Phoenix last spring. There were districts from all over the western United States that had come to Phoenix to attend that. I think we had some people from Wyoming, California. So this is really a national movement. It's really taking hold across the district of it. Basically, you know, the goal is to make a commitment to educators and families and communities to make their schools future-ready. And so that is, that is the goal of this portion of our strategic plan. Just a little perspective there, those are school districts that have participated or are participating, and that's a little bit dated, so it may be larger than that. Couple of states there where they're kind of lonely. I think there's only one in Utah, but we're ahead of Utah. So, but you can see it's kind of moving across from the east coast towards the western United States. These are what we pledged to, fostering and leading a digital learning culture within our schools, helping schools and families transition to high-speed connectivity. What high-speed connectivity is changing rapidly, you guys have all seen the commercials about the, you know, the gigabit connection. Just to put that in perspective, right now, the district has a two-gigabit connection that is serving 24,000 students. And pretty soon, people are going to have that type of bandwidth in their home. So it's, we really can't even imagine what they're going to do with all that bandwidth. I can't wait to figure it out, but, you know, it's really, really changing, you know, and it's much more than just, you know, downloading a minute or less. You know, it's really going to change what people have access to and how they have access to things. Universal access, that is key if we're going to give every child in Scottsdale the same opportunities. You know, there are many of our schools now that include Google Docs as our Google applications as part of their homework requirement. We have people that use some of our reading and math intervention software as a homework assignment. So we recognize that learning does not stop at the end of the school day, and we need to make sure that we're providing all those resources to all of our students basically all the time. So, so as you can see, there's some lofty goals there that are coming, but I think they're important. This is the structure of the Future Ready Plan, and, you know, basically, the message here is that it's not a technology plan, it's an initiative that everybody in the organization has to buy into. Everybody from given resources to business office to, you know, our teaching and learning staff, you know, even the technicians that are supporting things out in the field. It won't work if we just buy widgets and give them to kids. That's not it at all. We've seen that happen in multiple places across the country, and a lot of those efforts have been a dismal failure because they had no real purpose behind pushing stuff out.
We've seen a lot, and we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot from other districts, and we've learned a lot from things that we've done here since 2007, and programs that we've tried and, you know, were successful at the time and wouldn't work now. And a lot of those struggles are around not having a framework like this where everybody is involved and around making decisions around the device first. So we want to buy this device and then figure out what to do with it, and that's the opposite of the way we should be doing it. So if you notice that the center of all the gears is student learning. So the Future Ready Initiative, as Tom said, is not a technology initiative, it's a student learning initiative in which all of the different assets of the school district need to work together in order to make this successful. So this is our transportation department, this is building services, HR, curriculum, the finance office, everybody working together within this framework with student learning at the center. So simply being able to use technology, and this quote, by the way, comes from the International Society for Technology and Education. Simply being able to use technology is no longer enough for our students. So we know that a lot of them come in and they're able to use technology to some degree. They've, they've learned maybe from their teachers, maybe they've taken classes with NSUSD, but they've also learned a lot by doing it themselves, by learning from a friend, by going to a friend's house. But we see them using mobile devices, our parents see them using computers at home, and, you know, we kind of make an assumption that they know how to use, you know, that device that they're using. But the key question is, what do they know how to do with that device? Do they know how to text message and do Instagram? Probably. Do they know how to use that device to learn? Do they know how to use it to study? As it says, "to analyze, to learn, and explore." Digital skills are vital for preparing students to work, live, and contribute to the social and civic fabric of their communities. So this is a different organization than Future Ready, but they're saying the same thing. We have a duty and obligation to prepare our kids for what comes after SUSD. So, you know, we might have been in a situation for a long time where ours, we have kids that go through school, and they graduate 12th grade, and they get a laptop to take with them to college, and then they take it to college and sit down in a lecture hall and open up the laptop and realize, I don't know how to use this laptop to be a good college student. And that's, we can't, we can't be responsible for that. We need to give them the skills that they need in order to go and be productive members of society, regardless of what that is. So we can't any longer just say that our kids know how to do this stuff. We need to make sure that they're doing it in order to be productive. So this is the timeline for our Future Ready Framework and what we're talking about.
So basically, we are working with the technology committee that's been an ongoing group that Dr. Ross particularly has spent time with in the last couple of years, looking at the goals and working on some of the goals that were established in the technology plan. As you recall, the district has a technology plan that was written about two and a half years ago with the idea that this fiscal year would have been the first year of a new initiative. And so obviously, we've had to pull that back for a period of time. So there are a lot of really good components in that plan. I think there was a lot of thought that went into the building of that. We had teachers and parents and administrators and students on the committee, and, you know, we focused on the professional development, on the teaching and learning aspect, on the leadership aspect. So really, the refinement is about basically taking what's in that and translating it to fit within that Future Ready framework and, you know, taking a look at, you know, we thought this was a good idea three years ago. Is it still a good idea, or can we toss it, or just revise it a little bit?
So for example, one, there were four areas in which we had to write goals for the 2012 technology plan from the Department of Education. One of those areas was professional development. So the technology committee wrote a number of goals and strategies for that, for that component. We've accomplished some of them, but they're all ongoing because, you know, change is a process, not an event, so it's, we don't just do something and now we're done with it. So we've been refining over the years, but now that we are looking at the Future Ready framework, one of the gears is in professional, professional learning. So what we'll be doing with the technology committee this year is taking a look at those goals and strategies that we wrote in 2012 for professional development and seeing how they fit into the professional development gear of Future Ready, and then refining and adding and updating them. So that's, that's the process that's in that first star there, is ongoing refinement of things that we are already currently doing.
Of course, the other part of that timeline is that we would have to go out and ask the voters of the Scottsdale Unified School District to support a new capital initiative. In order for that to get on the ballot for November of next year, we would need your approval by the end of this school year, May or June. So assuming that that does happen, and the board and voters agree that this is a, this is, of course, only one component of a capital override, but by far the biggest one, that would make funding available beginning with the fiscal year 2018. And it would carry us all the way through almost the first quarter of the 21st century. And we would, you know, begin the implementation of that year.
That's why you don't hear the same phrases like 21st century learning anymore, because we're talking about, you know, going through the first quarter in that. So we're talking about the future. And then for the rest of our presentation, we're going to talk about the implementation of this new digital learning initiative that goes along with Future Ready.
So you've seen something similar to this. So this is really for purposes, it is a concept, and, you know, it has evolved over time, but basically, the idea behind this is that it would be a mistake to try and drop, you know, thousands and thousands of devices on every grade level at the same time without some thoughtful, having a thoughtful process behind that. So as you can see, in that first year, 2017, 18, there would be some focus on beginning to roll out grade-level mobile labs for elementary schools with the eventual goal to have grade-level mobile labs at grades one through five. And kindergarten would continue to use some of that, I'm sure, but, you know, we also have existing computer labs and whatnot. So there's not a real specific focus on kindergarten. And then at the middle school level, you begin to move towards creating a, that device, that environment that we talked about earlier where students have rich access to technology, not necessarily throughout the day, you may not need it while you're running labs out on the track field, but the idea is that, you know, we've been very careful not to use the term one-to-one on this because that can mean a hundred different things if you ask a hundred different people. But, you know, and it's rolled out in various ways, but the goal is to provide every student with the access they need, put it that way. Those numbers there are rounded off in the green there that represent approximate enrollment for those grade levels. And then you can notice in the first year also, we begin with teachers. So really, that first year, there'd be a heavy, heavy emphasis on preparing teachers for what is coming down the pike. So for example, you know, we know we're going to really need to target high school teachers that have freshman students and middle school teachers that have sixth-grade students because there's going to be a large influx of technology. And then you sort of stagger that down the line, and you can also stagger the amount of professional development you need and the amount of technical support that you need. So, you know, you don't always have to have it all, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be practical or advisable to do it all at once.
So this, and this is a template. This isn't a set-in-stone thing. This is just a plan that we are working off of right now. And again, those numbers are rough estimates, but this, this is a rollout plan for the devices themselves, for the equipment. But we need to ask the right questions before we do any of that. The wrong question is, what is the device that we're going to use? So if you know, we're not talking about those devices, we're not saying that these are going to be Chromebooks or PCs or iPads. We don't know what that's going to be yet, and we're also not giving you specifics on the logistics of the program, you know? How will the kids interact with the device? Will it be in every classroom that they move device to device? Will they take the device with them? It's inappropriate for us right now to ask those types of questions and make those types of comments. The correct thing to do is to talk about the curriculum first and what are the curricular needs. So that is what we are currently engaged in. So we have been meeting with various stakeholder groups. We've talked with teachers through the technology committee, through the curriculum specialists, through the professionals that are in the room today to talk about what are our curricular needs. So when we think about something like the Discovery Education Tech Book, that is a shift in how science classes are being taught, so then we had to match a device to those curricular needs of discovery education. So throughout this process, throughout the rest of this year and into next year, we'll be having those conversations and determining what we want our students to be able to do specific to their subjects. So what does, what does a Future Ready student need to be able to do in an English classroom, in a social studies classroom? And then we will think about the device that goes best with that. So we want to let the curricular decisions drive the purchases and to drive this whole, this whole program. So this is a metaphor bridging the implementation gap, and we can apply it to just about any innovation or change that we want to implement within Scottsdale. So we start with an idea, and then we want to get to classroom use. But between idea and classroom use, there is an entire ocean of barriers and roadblocks and obstacles to successfully implementing that. So we need to be careful and thoughtful about building that implementation bridge to help us get there. And I'm purposeful in using an image of the Golden Gate Bridge because of the old, the old anecdote about painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Have you heard this? No? So the old story goes, you know, they paint the bridge to protect it from the salt in the air and seawater and whatnot. So to preserve the infrastructure of the bridge, they paint it. And they start at one end, and they start painting, and it takes them a year to get from one end to the other, painting everything. And then as soon as they're done, go back to the beginning and start painting again, right? And that's what we're talking about here, is a continuous process of being mindful of the barriers and the things that trip us up and the things that will keep us from being successful in what we want to do. So we've been very thoughtful in designing this program and designing this initiative. We'll be using a model called the Concerns-Based Adoption Model. It's a 40-year-old proven model for, that school districts use to implement new innovative programs. We'll be using that within the Future Ready framework and standards from the International Society for Technology and Education that tell us what students and teachers should be doing in the modern classroom. So we'll design a multi-year program that increases the interaction and collaboration between teachers and students and parents using mobile technology for that personalized learning experience. As Tom said, we don't use, we're not using the phrase one-to-one. I don't like that phrase because one-to-one means something to me than it means to everybody else. When, most people hear one-to-one, they think about one student, one device. When I hear one-to-one, I think about the relationship between teacher and student, one-to-one interaction, and this program increases that interaction. So the program will consist of ongoing training and professional development with a curriculum-first approach developed with the Concerns-Based Adoption Model research-based tools. So what this looks like, looking back at the plan here, as Tom said, in that first year of funding, 2017 and 18, grades two and four and eight are expanding some things that we already have going in elementary and middle schools, which is laptops on carts. But there isn't a focus on student devices in that first year. So what we'll be doing for the rest of this year, we've been looking at the concerns that different stakeholder groups have. So what concerns do our teachers have and our administrators and district leadership? Because when we look at the Concerns-Based Adoption Model, concern is the important word there, everybody has their own concerns. word there, everybody has their own concerns. So already in your minds, you have concerns about what, what we're telling you. If your concern is about how are we going to pay for this? How are we going to make it happen? How is the infrastructure going to handle it? It doesn't do any good for me to start training you and talking to you about how great it's going to be for kids because that's not where your concerns are yet. So we need to address the concerns of all the stakeholder groups before we can get across that bridge. That's part of the bridge building process. So we have been doing that and we are working on addressing those concerns already. The next step is to develop what's called an Innovation Configuration Map. It's like a roadmap. It says, this is where we want to be on the other side of the bridge. This is what we need to do. This is what it's going to look like. And we will do that within all of those gears. So that's when we say this isn't a technology initiative, it's an everybody initiative. It's a Scottsdale initiative. So the first gear is curriculum, instruction and assessment. So the curriculum team will be working towards saying, what's it going to look like when we're on the other side of the bridge? The assessment department will be looking at it and say, what's assessment going to look like when we're on the other side of the bridge? Well, that means we're going to go from a month and a half testing window for easy merit down to five days. That's more instructional time. You know, human resources might look at what it's going to look like on the other end of the bridge. And that might look like, we might change the questions that we ask teacher candidates, you know, to let them know that this is what we're doing in Scottsdale. It's going to affect funding. So everybody that's affected in one of the gears will have a hand in this process this spring to help draw that map and say, this is what it's going to look like when we're on the other side of the bridge and we're implementing this. Throughout next year, when we, once we get that, the voters on our side in November, we will begin designing the professional development that goes out to all the employee groups. So this isn't just professional development for teachers. It's professional development for the technicians who work in IT. It's professional development for the ed center staff. Everybody is involved in this. Everybody has professional development. Now that first year, we see we have devices for teachers and devices for administrators. And I should point out that administrators includes everybody. It includes principals, assistant principals, district leadership, curriculum. Everybody is involved in this. The professional development for teachers in that first year is how do you teach now that you have a device that you can take with you around the classroom and that you can take home with you? And your students have access to digital content. That, a portion of that is professional development. How do you use this device? How do you use the tools that are accessible to you? How do you log into Google, et cetera? And that professional development, a lot of it will be provided by the technology coaches. Two of them are here with us today, Amy and Lauren. But the bulk of that professional development is delivered via the curriculum specialists. Because again, this isn't technology training, it's teacher training. So social studies teachers in that first year will be learning how to teach social studies now that I have a device. Okay? It's a curriculum-first approach. For the administrators, we don't need to provide much training to administrators on how to use a laptop. They all have laptops, they currently work on them, they know how to use one to do their daily tasks. The training for them is going to be, how do I be an instructional leader on my campus now that all of my teachers have mobile devices? What should it look like when I go into a classroom? What should I see the teacher doing with that device? So that is the training in that first year. It's a, it's a heavy emphasis on the teachers and transforming teaching with a mobile device. Then the professional development follows the device rollout. So in that first year, in 2018, 19, for sixth and ninth grade teachers, then the focus is on them and how they teach English one, sixth grade math. Now that not only do they have a device and they've been through a year of training and use of having a teacher device, now how do I teach now that all of my students have access to a device as well? Now we've already been doing this type of thing in Scottsdale and I'll, I'll talk about that shortly. But this is continuous PD that evolves through the cycle and it's, it's very purposeful and we will spend a good deal of time this year and next year designing it. So as I said, we've been doing these great things already. So here are just a few examples of some stuff we've been up to over the last few years. So you've heard about the Discovery Education Tech Book. That's, that's probably our earliest example of this Future Ready type of thing. And that was our first jump into not having a textbook. So for our science classes, their textbook is the tech book. So instead of a paper, chapter nine on the solar system, the chapter on the solar system is an interactive online sort of webpage. And it's not a P, it's not a PDF of the textbook, it's interactive. The students can highlight text, they can annotate, they can look things up, they can watch videos. And if they decide tomorrow that Pluto is back on being a planet again, or off the list, whichever it is now, then the tech book will reflect that. So we don't have to worry about textbooks being out of date for seven years. Two years ago, one of the goals of the Technology Committee in 2012 was to develop a new TIP program. So if you've heard this, this phrase before, the TIP program, this was a program that came out of the 2007 capital override by which teachers could enroll in a program, they get a laptop and then they receive professional development. This was a new iteration of that and we called it TIP at the time, we're not calling it that anymore. But this was a, this was us experimenting with this new curriculum-first approach. So the technology coaches worked with the secondary English and English arts curriculum specialist and designed a semester-long professional development program where the theme was, how do I teach English if I have a Chromebook and all of my students have Chromebooks as well? So Chromebook was just the device that we chose for that program. Doesn't have to be a Chromebook. It's how do I be a digital age teacher? So we've run that program three times now, three or four times?
We're about to start.
About to start the third. So it's been very successful and the professional development for this has not been the traditional where we have teachers come in and sit down and learn how to do something. There is a face-to-face training component, but they work off of a Google site. The teachers work in modules that they work at their own pace and they learn skills from the technology coaches and from the curriculum specialist, but they in turn have to take them and apply them in their classroom and then report back to the group, share out with the group and learn from each other. They contribute to each other's learning through sharing out. So they, we have celebratory things where they come and share the projects that they've done. There is a video chat aspect. So once a week, we have a, a Google Hangout where any of the teachers in the program can log in and talk about it and, and get assistance. We have videos and that they can participate in. So it's, it's a true blended learning professional development format that districts everywhere are utilizing now. So moving forward, we are about to expand this to other curricular areas. I think we're planning to go to social studies next. We're no longer calling it a TIP program because that's associated with the last program. We're calling it, I don't remember what I'm doing here, but I came up with something clever. It's on the whiteboard in my office. So that is the model that we'll be using and continuing to refine and develop this year and next year, getting ready for this, this larger rollout. For this past year, our instructional units in elementary schools were developed by Scottsdale teachers and they are utilizing these digital tools. So we had teachers come in over the summer and develop the instructional units. They are all electronically based. Teachers can log in through our single sign-on and go to the Google site and access these units that are rich with digital resources, with videos. And it really makes it so if you're a teacher coming into Scottsdale, you're a new teacher, you're a veteran, you can log in and get these instructional units that are created by your colleagues. It's really awesome stuff. Similarly, our music, our elementary school music courses have adopted digital curriculum. So that is, would be a component of this program as well. Our world languages likewise have adopted digital resources. So as Tom said, the days of us buying textbooks are starting to diminish. There will always be a need for tactile textbooks, but I think what we'll see in education in general is a move toward digital content. And then finally, you've heard me talk about before and certainly you know that we have made a move in recent years to using Google Apps for Education, which is kind of the shell that makes all of this possible, the, the digital interaction and the collaboration. So just want to give you a couple of pictures, just to show you some snapshots of, of around Scottsdale. We have these types of things happening in, on every single campus. Every one of our campuses has teachers that are doing Future Ready things with students. So we see, here we see students from Chaparral and Arcadia, Cheyenne, Navajo. Who else do we have here? Mojave? I think we have Mojave on here as well. We see devices from a number of different programs. So I see a kid who's using a Chromebook from that English TIP program. I see another student who's using his own device in a BYOD classroom. I see iPads, I see PC laptops, I see a variety of devices. Device is really irrelevant in this case because they're all doing this Future Ready type of personalized learning. And this is what we want to get to in a hundred percent of our classrooms and get all of our teachers here. We would love to respond to any questions or comments that you might have. It's a lot, lot to throw at you.
Mrs. Harpkin.
All right. I'll start. So Tom, excellent, outstanding work. Really, really tremendous. And I realize this just didn't happen overnight. This is years and years of focus and iterations and, so Dr. Peterson, thank you for your leadership in making this a priority because it clearly shines. I just think it's fantastic. My, I'm just going to make just a comment in terms of the strategic plan because what we're doing and where we're headed here, it seems to me, so it's right on target. So you're the subject and matter experts. I think you validated it with just really interesting ideas in terms of concern-based adoption model, amazing curriculum-based approach, makes a lot of sense. So you're the subject matter experts, but it resonates with me that this makes a whole lot of sense. My only comment for you is, I'm going to mention the strategic plan because I just want to share the notion of it, not in the, because this isn't an exercise, right? I don't want to share something with you that you feel is an exercise. I feel like it's a tool that enables you to execute on what you'd like to do. And so when you go back and update the strategic plan, I was kind of, this is kind of funny. I was looking through kind of the excellence targets and there's kind of four themes for me. It basically is technology refresh, student learning, which is everything from digital content, classroom innovation, Scottsdale Online, investment requirements and professional development. And then it was funny, I kind of added in, okay, so where are the priorities, if you will? They're probably in here, but that are focused on, gosh, building stronger communities, curriculum kind of focus and then security, privacy, BRDR, those kinds of things. So then it was funny because then you said, okay, well, here's Future Ready. And I look at Future Ready, I'm like, oh, okay, so smarter people are coming to the same conclusion. So the point is, we're doing all of it. So I do think it's worthwhile to take this document and, oh, it's the Future Ready focus and here's our priorities, here's what we're going to do, and then here's how we're going to measure the outcome and then what do we need, you know, to get there? So it is all here. I just think it's worthwhile to update the strategic plan with where you're at so that we can consistently connect with all stakeholders. Because this is just a document that you can use to connect with, we're one set of stakeholders, but it, I think it puts it in a, gosh, an absorbable, almost if you will, context for the community stakeholders, the, you know, your site leadership stakeholders. So I would just say, you know, kind of get that lined up so that we can support you to execute on this plan as efficiently and as effectively as possible. Does that make, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to make clear that we combined the two presentations for three, A, strategic plan, technology improvements, and three, B, capital override discussion. Just kind of, they fit so well together, so just put those, put those one side there. Other questions, comments? Mrs. Hoover.
I, I guess both, but thank you. I do find it exciting. Technology scares me a little, but it's the future and, and I do think our district, you know, accepts this is where we need to head in our classrooms and, but I'm sure there's a lot of stakeholders, teachers, everyone that's kind of like me, somewhat ambiguous on technology, scares them a little, you know it's great, but it's also scary and there's always, you know, there's bad that comes with the good. So I guess one of my first concerns coming, I know this has been a process obviously for years and, and it's going to continue to be a process all the time, not just one big unveiling of, here's our new technology. I get that. I guess one of the things that always resonates or makes me kind of stop in question, in a process like this where, and it's very exciting for me to hear how much you've recognized buy-in and true understanding at every level is so necessary for this to be successful. That's obviously true. So I guess one of the questions, based on my experiences, concerns I've had in the past of, how do we really integrate the idea of the committee, the technology committee, and making sure that they have the time and the tools with their site educators, teachers and groups all across the site? I mean, every teacher there does it. How are we really offering them the tools and the time to be successful in getting that understanding and buy-in? And I think part of the plan kind of needs to include that model or, or understanding of, here's where you guys are really going to talk about this stuff. We're going to get your concerns and questions. We're, we're gonna, I just, to have that laid out and not be in a position where it's, you know, it's, this would be really great, but we don't, I, I can't really get everyone's opinion, so I'm just guessing, you know, that's when the disengagement happens.
We need to have, and thank you for your feedback. We need to have lots of, lots of conversations. We've already been inviting ourselves to any kind of gathering where we can get some people's ear, staff meetings, you know, we want to go to, we're going to meet with this Festive Parent Council starting in January. And, you know, even at the school level, we need to have conversations with parents. And, you know, I, the use of that concerns-based model really, you know, if we don't address those concerns, we're, we're not going to be successful. If people are worried, is there going to be enough Wi-Fi or they don't think there's going to be enough bandwidth or, you know, devices aren't going to work, you know, if that's where people are at, then we need to make sure we explain to them how we're going to address that so that we are successful in order to get that buy-in that you're referring to.
And it's, concerns are always two things are at the top. It would be, I'd love to do that if I knew it was going to work, you know, the Wi-Fi or the, you know, the machines themselves. So we need to address those concerns and also, as you said, time. That'd be great, I'd have the time to learn how to do that. So you're right, we need to address how we are going to structure that time for them. And if you notice, back in the Future Ready years, one of them is user part. So it, this process forces us to address that.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Kirby was next. Thank you. Again, some good stuff here, very good building blocks to move forward on. Tom, were you, when did you start with the district? Were you here in 2007 to build that plan or did you inherit?
I came right after the first year of the plan.
So you inherited that?
Yeah, so I started in 2008.
Okay. And then, I'm, we don't have to go into any specifics, but did you, are there any learnings from inheriting that plan that you can bring forward to our next rollout to make it smoother, more effective, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. I think, you know, there's a couple for me. You know, we, we need to focus more on the teachers first. I think that's probably the biggest one on a, on a larger scale than we did. You know, there was a lot of desire to get everything out there in all the classrooms right away. And we did provide, you know, some mandatory hours for all teachers to go through, but it was about, you know, which button to push and how to turn it on and, you know, that kind of stuff. It was at a very low level, if you will. But, you know, when we, that's part of the conversation that's coming out of the, the tech committee now in the last couple of years is, you know, we've got to get our teachers there, not, not to, we don't need to convince them that this technology is necessary. We need to ensure them, their concerns are being addressed and that we provide training We need to ensure them their concerns are being addressed and that we provide training that is focused on the curriculum-first model and not, here's your, here's your new widget and here's how you create a spreadsheet. You know, that kind of training is long gone.
Well, excellent. I mean, I hope you're not just saying that because you think it's what we want to hear. I hope you really mean it.
I promise you, we've had a lot of conversations.
Because this slide right here, you should have led with this slide because you had me at this slide, talking about, you know, the wrong question is what device, the right question is, what curriculum do we need? And bringing the teachers in and getting their buy-in early on. So I have just a series of more questions, if we can, if you can just indulge me for a bit. We'll start with that one slide because the note that I made was, I thought when we had a last, the last technology presentation in the, in Coronado, six, within the past six weeks, the idea was Chromebooks. So I remember asking some questions about Chromebooks. Are we now possibly backing off of that? Because I heard you today say it may not be Chromebooks.
Yeah, I think the interesting thing that's happening is, you know, that the end-user device is, is becoming less of an issue, which brand it is. You know, there's some advantages to, I hate to call them, but a dumbed-down device. So for example, Chromebooks have been a big hit so far in what we've rolled out. One, because they work seamlessly with the Google Apps in education, brilliant business plan, and people are buying into it by the millions. But the other thing about that is, is, you know, let's say I'm a student at Coronado High School and my battery on the device I have is tanked. I, you know, in my mind, the vision for me is that that student's going to go into the library or go somewhere, and they're going to check this into the library automation system, and it's going to get tagged for a repair. And then librarian can hand them another one and check it out to them. And the device really doesn't matter anymore because the content's all up here. So, you know, for example, laptops, you have, have all your stuff on it, and you probably don't want to just hand your laptop to somebody else. Said, hey, I'm not using it anymore, take, go for it. You know, you've got all your email, you've got all your documents, you've got a lot of stuff that resides on that device. And because we don't have to work around that model anymore, it makes the ability to use different kinds of devices. So I don't think, my prediction, it won't be necessarily all one type of device. And I would hate to have us box ourselves in because, you know, it's just like when the iPad came out, you know, there were rumors that there was going to be this tablet device for a couple of years. And then it came and everybody had to have, and we had to have them on our Wi-Fi. And, you know, so it just, we can't predict what that device is going to look like in 18, 24 months.
And it just put things in perspective, when the 2007 capital override, you know, we got that, the iPad was not yet invented, or at least it wasn't available. And in the time span between then and now, the iPad came out, became the most popular device in, in classrooms, and is now not the most popular device. So I mean, it's, you know, we've seen the life and death of, no, I shouldn't say that. It's still a very good device, but it was the most popular device across the country, and now it's not. So in two years, in three years, it might be some other thing we don't know about yet. This is open enough that we, whatever the device is, we'll be able to work with this. Chromebooks are currently what we recommend, and they're the most popular thing in Scottsdale right now because of the price and because they do everything that we need students to be able to do in the classes and nothing that we don't need them to be able to do.
But some places, for example, like science classrooms or science labs that use firmware and whatnot, you need a Windows-based device. You know, we have CTE programs that use Apple for a lot of their TV production.
And some of our classes need iPads because whatever they're doing in that class requires an iPad. So that's a decision based on what they need rather than around.
Okay, so I want to go back then to, because I'm really trying to visualize this, to this one-to-one, the phrase that you don't like to use. So I think what I'm hearing you say is that this, these are, this is hardware, we should talk hardware for a second, that will be attached to a classroom or a department or a grade, not necessarily that every child could be walking around with the, with the same device. We're not checking out devices to kids.
We could, we could, because we're, you know, we are going to have some.
Not every kid.
Not everybody. We may have a lot of students that would prefer to use their own personal device.
But how would, so, because I run into this in my own home. My daughter's on, got the Mac, I have the Windows-based desktop, and then my eighth grader has something from her school. It's little, I don't even know what it is. Can't even turn it on. So how, if you've got kids with a whole bunch of different devices, and maybe they're in a CTE class that does require Mac, I think is what you said, software, how does that, how does that work for that child that comes in with something, with his own laptop?
It's a great question, Board Member Kirby. The majority of what we, what we do and what we're moving towards is based through Google Apps, and that is device agnostic, so it doesn't matter.
It won't matter.
Yeah, what device it's on. Now, for something, if a student is enrolled in a class that requires a specific piece of software, then they'll have access to that for that class. But going across the curriculum, it would be, you know, really what we're moving toward, a lot of our classes are using an app called Google Classroom. It's a education-specific Google app that teachers use to manage their classes, hand out and receive assignments, have discussions, do all of that. It's like a closed website for teachers and students. And that works on everything from a phone to a tablet to any type of computer, it doesn't matter.
And does it work with any of the curriculum-based software?
Yeah, well, keep in mind.
Science, the related math, that the curriculum department makes you teachers?
Right.
Will it also be wide open on that end as well? Or does it box us into only certain kinds of?
No, that's just a medium for teachers to interact with their students. So if they were using Google Classroom, they might post an assignment on there that takes them to discovery education.
Yeah, so you have to keep in mind that most of those things are becoming web-based. I mean, if you look at what our students using now, most of it is web-based, you know, whether they're using SuccessMaker or they're using the science curriculum. Most of it's not on a computer anymore. When you get to programs like you need Photoshop or you need whatever, you know, then you have heavy-duty applications, CAD applications or whatever that need to reside on a hard drive, then you get specialized, more specialized in what device you use.
So tell me again the timing, I wrote down on that slide, I wrote down, who are you talking with to determine the curriculum decisions? Because you said we're talking with the, are you talking to department chairs? Are you talking to Dr. Benson? Are you talking to the teachers? Between now and November, who will you be talking, who will be engaged in that conversation?
All of those you mentioned. Currently, we are also working directly with the curriculum team, so Dr. Whitmore and the various curriculum specialists.
Okay. Because the timing, I believe, is important to do it prior to November because ideally what you want is to eliminate those concerns that you mentioned, because there are quite a few teacher concerns, right?
Right.
It's mostly the unknown. But it gets, and get their buy-in, because then you have 1,300 advocates in the community, right? Telling the voters, yes, this is going to be great. And along with that, my other suggestion to you would be back on the financials, I wrote down another one. You had mentioned something about saving time. Well, get specific, like get specific on where are we going to save time? And it may be in the transportation department, you know, maybe we're doing something by paper and we can save time, and what's the value of that? That can then, you know, maybe, maybe it's only 20 grand, but we have so many of those, it actually adds up to hundreds of thousands, that can then be reinvested back into the classroom in other ways. And that will also help the selling of the override, in my opinion, is to get very specific. And it will also help in the implementation, to make sure that we're hitting those objectives. On the, this slide, so I wrote down that the M&amp;O investment is $300,000 annually. Question, the cost of professional development for technology can be picked up by the capital override? Is that correct?
I'm going to refer to our CFO here.
Board Member Kirby. The professional development piece, the services, the purchase services, people, whatever we do, will, cannot be picked up by the capital.
Okay, so the cost then is more than just the restoration of the tech support positions at 120 and the technology coaching staff at 180. There's more M&amp;O cost besides just that 300,000 because?
Potentially can be, yeah.
Well, there's, there has to be professional development that comes with this. I mean, I wouldn't, there's, I don't think you're going to get support without it. So what's that investment look like? And over time, how many dollars per year? Because you said this is an ongoing, and does it, maybe it's our existing dollars that we're just going to deploy now to this area? All questions I have? You don't have to answer it right now. But it's just, and then do we need more professional development days? So can we fit the training you need in the days we already have? Or do we need more days to accomplish what you need? That's all what I consider part of the implementation. So I looked at this slide, which is more of a, I felt like a hardware deployment implementation. This means along with it, and this is very good, very well, it's a good skeleton to move forward with, I see an overlay of the professional development implementation, the curriculum rollout implementation, just with the costs associated with all of it. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, but it's important, yeah, I agree. And with, you know, with professional development, we've got to have it, which is very interesting. Talking to my technicians about the hardware rollout, and really, the number of devices was not where their concerns were, you know, that part is doable. You know, we do, obviously, if we do have, you know, devices that we're checking in and out, it'd be great if that was part of somebody's job to do that. Is that the role of the person in the library? I don't know. You know, so there's some of those pieces that we, we need to figure out what exactly that would look like.
And we've talked to a school district in California that has been successful for a number of years doing programs like this, so much so that our counterparts there have literally wrote the book on successful tech implementations. And really, the book is what goes wrong with, with technology implementations. And one of the number-one things on their list of things that go wrong is not having appropriate professional development to go along with it.
I think we also need to be creative. If, you know, we've got a couple of schools where they're really utilizing students to help, not just on the technical end, with teachers, but also with students, you know, if they're bringing their own device, how do I make it do this, you know, for this assignment or whatever? And also some on the, on the, on the technical end. But that's a resource that we could really tap into to help with that support piece, I think.
Okay. And along those lines of looking at other districts, the, on that slide, the data and privacy, particularly if the students are going to be bringing their own devices, it would have been hard enough, I believe, as it stood, if everyone was using the same device to protect the student data and privacy. But if they're all bringing their own, and they have their own email systems and tapping in, that, there's a district in the East Valley that's been struggling with this desperately, and it's been not pretty. So that's.
It's huge.
That's huge. And clearly beyond my pay grade, but it can go wrong very fast. So I just want to highlight that. Other question I had, so, yes or no, this is a question. Do we need the, how do I say this? Or is this plan, this capital override plan, dependent at all on the bond? And by that, I mean infrastructure. Do we need infrastructure, do we need a plan to pass to deliver the infrastructure required to deliver this technology? Yes? Okay. So my question is, I was thinking, on the ballot, they have to be two separate initiatives. So it's possible one can pass and one couldn't, right? Or one could bring the other one up to both pass, or one could bring them both down to both fail. So my question would be, we got to have somehow a Plan B. So what of this can happen if the bond fails? And I don't want to be a Debbie Downer on it, but what?
That's a great question. Maybe only 10% of it.
It may be, but what, what is, what is that 10%?
Is without the infrastructure?
Yeah, we would definitely have to modify our plan to some degree because, you know, we have to modernize, you know, switches and routers and all the pieces in between, the servers and all that, you know, along the line. So no question there'd be an impact, and it would, you know, impact on the dollars if we only, if we didn't have a bond and we only had the capital.
We would have to focus significantly on the BYOD aspect of it. And we could continue to provide professional development to teachers, provided that we still had instructional technology coaches and curriculum coaches. We could continue to provide future-ready professional development, but without ensuring that every student has access to get to that content and the devices, then it's really dependent on BYOD.
You know, and capital override discussion is agenda-wise, so I think I can say this. We might want to think about structuring this on the ballot in pieces versus an all-or-nothing. Because my concern is that if it's an all-or-nothing and it's dependent on the bond, things may not work out. And if, if the community says, yes, I want my, I want the kids to have the hardware, yes, I want the kids to have the curriculum, is, and I don't know enough about the detail. You guys would have to say, could we do this? Is there a way to let the voters determine? I don't know, it's just I'm throwing it out there for thought because I really, there's some good stuff here. Really good stuff. And I, and I'm very excited about the approach that you're taking from here all the way down to implementation. I'd hate to, I'd really hate to see it not pass.
Madam President, Board Member Kirby. Great thoughts. Obviously, in some of those things that you just spoke about, you see a lot of towns and cities break apart. We just had the election, that was done. I'm not going to say for 100% sure, but I'm 99.9% sure, districts do not have the ability to do that.
We can't do that.
Definitely not with the capital override. Yeah, definitely not with the capital override. And I've never seen a district do it with the bond, although I would defer to, let me do some research to ensure that it's 100% we can't do it, but I'm almost positive that we can't, that we can't break it out.
On the bond either?
On the bond either.
Okay. I think that needs some strategic thought.
Did you have a to that point?
I do, I do have a follow-up point. So as you're thinking that through, I'd be really interested in what that relationship looks like as well. I also would like us to think about what that other side of that equation may be, is that it may take some really thoughtful articulation and leadership to sell something that flies on the face of a bunch of soundbites. Sound, because I hear two soundbite, there's two soundbites out there that do not support the strategy, yet we all support the strategy. One is dollars in the classroom. So what I heard was first and foremost important was actually training our teachers, our teachers first. It's that concern-adoption curriculum. It actually is the depreciation of all this hardware. All of that is outside the classroom. So we have to help stakeholders understand to get the classroom results, there are outside-the-classroom investments that need to be made to make this happen. And they may not be decoupled all that well. So I'm not buying into necessarily it's an all-or-nothing, but I think we need to be open to that could be a 90% all-or-nothing, and we might have to rise to the occasion to say, this is what it looks like. And figure out how to do that in a way, by the way.
You can buy a new car, you need the engine too, so.
Yeah. Okay. One last question. I love the concerns-based adoption model, and I'm not familiar with it. Have we used that before in the district and beyond technology, anything else, any other implementations?
Not formally like this, but we've used aspects of it before.
Is that something that I could just go online and Google and find it?
C-VAM, yep.
What is it?
C-VAM.
C-VAM?
Yep.
Okay.
Concerns-based adoption model. I think the website you'll be looking for is SEDL, Southeast Design Lab.
Okay, great. That's, it's really interesting. Sounds like it might be something that we might want to operationalize everywhere in the district. So thank you both for your presentation and the thought that has gone into this so far. Looking forward to having us. Mr. Jackson, you were next.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just wondered to kind of mirror what my colleague said.
I just wondered to kind of mirror what my colleague said. Every time I hear you gentlemen speak on this, you inspire confidence that we are, you have a plan. It's well thought out. And I too love the fact that, I'm going to butcher this, but you're, you're leading with curriculum. Not, no offense intended at all, sometimes technology types get so enamored with technology that they lead with that and
You can call us geeks.
That's clearly not the case here, so I applaud that and that. So thank you for that and for this wonderful plan. And I think Board Member Kirby made some great points about the bond and the override, how they clearly are joined. We have some work to do to figure that out, but what a plan. I tend to be, I tend to think our community will understand that SUSD being a leader in technology is critical for our students and we'll see the value there. It's a, anybody would understand in this world that that's where we are all heading. So I believe our community will understand that if we present it to them appropriately, you know, in a, in a, in the right manner. I cannot believe that the community won't support us making this type of investment. So thank you for this wonderful presentation.
I have one more. Mrs. Kirby. Okay, one more watch out. I think something we need to, to lay out. With, with massive hardware, software, technology investments, I think we, as a community, I've seen this happen recently in the community here. We get all wrapped up in the excitement of all the new tools and the gadgets and things, but we forget about the ongoing expenses in the future years, which can be really significant. And so, and for us, I believe that would hit MNO, future maintenance, replacement. I don't know if it would. That's my question.
It's some of each.
Okay, so what is it?
You'll see some of that in the capital override presentation Danny's going to do.
What's that plan look like for capital override and for MNO? Which is really what I'm more concerned about is, is because capital override is a fixed bucket. I want to know what's going to be the MNO drain. And maybe on that same presentation, you also add what are the MNO savings from the efficiencies? Because technology usually brings efficiency and maybe they offset each other. But we, we have to be cognizant, cognizant that while this is all kind of sexy and fancy right now, we may pay for it in future years and kind of kick ourselves for not asking those questions.
Madam President, Board Member Kirby. Capital, the capital override bond, capital needs would be paid for out of capital or, or other capital-type dollars, not MNO. For, for future, really what we're talking about, that would be a possibility of, of an MNO drain, although a lot of it already exists, is really personnel, personnel, techs, people to work on the stuff. Software licenses and, and the actual devices are all a capital, a capital piece. So it's really just going to be personnel in that department to keep it up. And then, as you spoke earlier, possibly professional development. All those other, all of those other funds like Title II and some other places that professional development can be paid for out of. So although I think there will be probably some possible added, added expenses onto MNO just from everything that they're talking about, I, I think it is limited and can be directed in other places if we have a concern on that.
Okay, well, in, in multi-year, and let's just be honest, the $300,000 that's on the first page, you know, at least 120 of it would be more, add more ed center administrative personnel. And I'm not sure about the coaching, where they actually, where that actually gets counted. So does it, what's, what bucket does it go into? Is it driving our adminis, are those future MNO expenses, new expenses and outlays, driving up our administrative? And are there any offsets?
That private student support.
That's my question. You know, I mean, lay that out because that's going to, those are going to be the questions the community is going to ask. Where is, does this mean that admin's just getting bigger? Because we have to head that off.
And I was so happy to be able to watch the presentation earlier this week. And so I got most of my questions answered during that. Thank you very much. Excellent, excellent presentation. And because I got to watch this earlier, a couple of things that I saw in the meantime, I thought I'd just share with you. They kind of probably jumped out at me because of our earlier conversations. And I'm going to use my phone to read it. One of the quotes that I saw that really stood out was, "We are currently preparing students for jobs that don't exist yet using technologies that haven't been invented in order to solve problems we don't even know are problems yet." And when I think back, I started doing professional development for teachers when they were first getting their computers in their room and they were afraid to turn the on button, or sometimes it wasn't plugged in and they couldn't figure out why it wasn't working. I mean, we're going way back. It's been very exciting for me to see all the different changes. And, you know, when we used to spend $10,000 for one single computer that would sit in a room and to think now that we kind of throw our phones away every two years, you know, who knew that that kind of thing would happen? But just one thing I wanted to share with everybody is a graph that I saw this morning. And it just makes me really think, because I'm a bibliophile, I love my books, but it, four different things. Uber is the world's largest taxi company, but it owns no vehicles. Facebook is the world's most popular media owner, but it creates no content. Alibaba, which I would have thought it was Amazon, if, if it was my house, it would be Amazon, is the most valuable retailer, but has no inventory. And Airbnb is the world's largest accommodations provider and it owns no real estate. And that just, you know, it makes me think we really, we really need to think outside of the possibilities that it can be created and not the restraints. And so just wanted to share that little bit with you guys today. And thank you so much for your presentation. The last thing, Madam President.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Just, I, I wanted to kind of, Madam President and board members, I appreciate so much people highlighting the significance of professional development and how important that's going to be moving forward. But I don't want to get lost on the fact that the board has already approved some really solid digital licenses from the previous capital override that will continue. And while we don't have much PD, the PD has been targeted. We have two professional development days and a district days. We do, I'll just use elementary as an example. We highlight our instructional ELA units and that one PDA, PDA, PDA right out of the chute and get our all elementary teachers up and running. We use the second one in January to highlight math. And as Danny Ryan said, we had a little bit left in Title II, which is supposed to go to professional development. We brought in every single elementary teacher for a half day to learn about Discovery Ed techbook so they could get their feet wet. Without that targeted PD, we're lost. But don't ever want our taxpayers not to recognize that every single adoption has had a digital resource component, but we need more resources and tools moving forward to allow us to be better actualized by our kids. The only place we really were struggling is in social studies because those are so old that the licenses don't exist anymore. So we've got Discovery Ed streaming that can help our teachers, but that is the one area we are deficit. So just want to make sure that everything you've approved has a digital resource with it moving forward as we're breaking up center. Need more time, need more resources, and they'll need to be updated moving forward. Not significant. So appreciate that conversation much. So that's going to be touched on in Dr., or Danny O'Brien's presentation for capital override because that's referencing curriculum too.
And so we are
A lot of doctors.
We are talking that item 3B, the capital override question.
Right. And Danny's going to take us through preliminarily where we are. And a lot of this is, the umbrella is technology. Because it's, it's a large cost, but it's also a large need. So Danny's going to take us through where we currently are looking forward for the capital override.
Good morning, members of the board, members of the board, members of the board, members of the board. Today we will just do, I put up there as a review, capital override review, but really it's just a starting point to start, really to continue what Tom and Kyle just presented. But really to just start the discussion on what we want the capital override to look for, what, what we want it to pay for, the categories and stuff. So in the presentation, we, we used a lot of what we had previously in the, in the capital override that just, that just stopped. So we used a lot of that data, the historical data to go on this. This has been something that we've worked on for a while. We do have the capital override oversight committee, which is made up of a lot of community members, teachers. I believe we got a student rep on there this year too, that has some discussion. We had a lot of discussion last spring, or two springs ago, excuse me, about what we want the capital override to pay for. So we use that information also, also going forward. Just a little bit, again, some historic. We want to bring back the funding lost in fiscal year 16 due to the expiration of the capital override. So, and I should say 15, so I apologize, there's a typo there. Because we lost it last year, we don't, we don't have it current. Right now, as I've explained to the board a couple of times and explained to a lot of the principals and everything over the past year, we've kind of cut back to needs only instead of wants to make sure that we had some carryover funds from those dollars to get us through fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17. So right now, technology and some of the other departments that have capital override are really kind of running on that last little fume of carryovers that they've created over a year ago by, by really cutting back on what they're paying and what they're purchasing. The state over several years, but this year has been our highest, has reduced capital funding by approximately 86%. So I talk a lot during the budget process of how our capital, our capital unrestricted capital or what we call district additional assistance has been cut since 2018 balance state, state. This year it's 86%. Previous couple of years, it's been about 60, 65%. So, you know, we're really losing that capital that we need to be able to purchase some of these things. Also, based off of current assessed valuation, again, as we go forward, we're going to do assessed valuations in February, so this might change a little bit. But the estimated tax on it is, is 18.6 cents per $100 of assessed value. And that's on a home. I didn't go for commercial or anything just because usually we talk about home and home taxpayers, homeowners when we talk about the taxes. The previous override provided $9.9 million. That's how much we got every year, per year for that. The proposed capital override, as we sit right now, is $8.5 million. So we have reduced it a little bit. Some because we, we bought some stuff over the past seven years for some of the categories, but also being cautious of, of the stakeholders and the taxpayers. Making sure that, that we're cautious about what that rate is and how much we're asking you to give. We don't overfluss that too much, too many requests. So we will have a election in November of, possibly have an election in November of 2016. Again, as Tom's presentation showed, we will ask the board that in the May or June timeframe. There's, the county actually requires that timeframe. And it will be effective. The money will start coming in in July 1st of 2017 and run right through the ending of the fiscal year of June 30th, 2024. Remembering that that is a seven-year period. And remembering since all the discussion that we had over the past couple of years, the override, the capital override is different than a MNO override. The MNO override is seven years, but it phases out in years six and seven. The capital override is a cliff. You go seven years and all the cutting, all the funding gets cut off, but you get it for seven years instead of five years. So a couple of differences between the two, the two overrides. This, this has been shown to the board before in a couple of different presentations. But these are the categories. This is what the capital override oversight committee and, and heads of some of these departments looked at to see what they wanted and the amounts that they wanted. Again, using historical and the needs of, of those departments. Just a little bit here, a little bit of a, a look at what, at what could happen in the seven-year period. This is a lot of work that Tom has done. Looking where you can see there that in the very beginning, we're getting teacher devices. We're getting student computers, completing the voice-over IP phone system and some tech, some devices for admins as we haven't been able to refresh in a long time. Two, two things to note about every year is we have this item called additional classroom technology. This is really working with the site level and with Tom and his department to determine what the needs is. We just had a lot of discussion about, you know, are we going away from Chromebooks? Or we used to have iPads? We don't know from year to year what possibly that device is going to be. So we use an example of, say, smart boards, you know? We might have additional, that funding that year might reset a lot of smart boards that are going out. But we don't know because maybe something replaces smart boards. I, I don't know what the future of a smart board is. So we really want to make sure we, we keep it open to understand that we're going to see the needs. And maybe even programs within the schools change. And so they might be, we're talking about CTE needing Macs and other things like that. Sometimes a program will, will work through that. And the other one that we don't have on here, it's a standard piece, is that software, software licenses. So we talked about how are, we talked just briefly again, how, how do you, how do you maintain this? How do you, how do you support that? We have software licenses within the district even currently right now that is almost $1 million a year. And those are either purchasing software, doing annual renewals for licenses or whatnot. So those are, and you'll see in just a minute a few of those things of what they are. So you can see there how we break it out over, over the, over the years. And here's, here's a list, here's a list of some of the licensing and agreements. So we have a lot of things. So we talk in here, we're talking from, from my world, you know, Tyler Technologies, that's our financial system. You know, we have to have that license every year. You know, we have Frontline in the HR department that is our A-SOP or our sub. But then we have a lot of other ones that are linked to supporting and maintaining the technology that we are purchasing. And again, approximately $1 million a year fluctuates a bit, but approximately. And those might change too. This is just what we have right here, you know? We might get, God, let's not get into financial software. I won't go down that road, but we might change, you know, sub, sub softwares or stuff. So this is just what we have right now and the needs that we have right now. So although we do have names up there, some of the vendors could change over the seven-year period. Our next one is, is fine arts. This is from our fine arts people. So we're using, as I talked about a little bit historically, of kind of where did some of these dollars come from? Or, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't just pull out of the hat, you know? We're going to pick sections. We're using the previous capital override purchases. So the finance department with the help of, of Dr. Benson are using those to help establish baselines of what every department needs. And all departments have different, have different needs. So we're, we're working through that currently now and going forward. And it could change. Again, even we might not think that a clarinet is changing, but the way we do finance, fine arts is changing. Now, now we're doing a lot on the digital, a lot on the computer, a lot of those things. So we have to be, just some examples of what fine arts can fund and what they currently funds right now or previously funds. Uniform replacements, instruments, sound and lighting, you know, auditoriums, a lot of the auditoriums, the lights and the curtains and all that kind of stuff. And then just equipment, equipment for the fine arts needs. A lot of our high school programs, each program has a different need. So at Arcadia, the dance program might have a need in that kind of stuff. Previously, and looking at it right now, we did allocate, allocate by sites by ADM. So every year we looked at the ADM and we gave the site an allocation. That was done. And I think Tom probably was on it, I wasn't here. That was kind of a formula that was driven and a, a way to kind of make it a little bit fair and equal during, during the last, in the beginning of the last override. And through the capital override oversight committee. So again, those community members that were coming forward to say that this is how we do it. And we use that, and they have site allocations to support their baseline needs and then their own specific needs. Again, the elementaries might have some standard needs. The high school might have some standard needs, but then they also have their own debate on what kind of programs they have within their, within their site. So again, site dollars, this is going down to the site. This is our curriculum. And we have there again, we have at the very top some renewals. So these are some digital resources that are renewals. So we currently have them, they're currently an adoption that we have. And these are the needs that are going to recur every year. And then the remaining dollars, when we get out, will be used for the continuation of our, of our instructional material review cycle that goes on. And we just put a little bit of kind of context here to say, you know, a lot of people are going to say, well, how, how are you going to use $800,000 a year? Do you really need that? Well, here's a few examples of what we need for some of these adoptions. And this is just example, Dr. Benson can certainly talk about a lot, a lot more. But Algebra I, just for that course, that cost was $177,000 to do that materials adoption. So you can see, and that's just one, that's just one course in, in the high school level. Obviously, we have geometry. But then when you look down here at Discovery Ed, Discovery Ed, for the full K-12 program of this, it's just over $1 million. So a lot of times So a lot of times, because an adoption can be so expensive, we might have a little bit spent one year, and then those carryforward funds comes into that second year to make that bigger purchase. So, yes.
May I ask a question? So, thank you. Are there, so is there a digital content alternative to the material cycle? I mean, we, is that a number?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to call a friend here.
This is all digital?
No, great question. I'm president, board member Hartman. Every resource we have, with the exception of social studies, has a digital resource with it. So let's just take Algebra I as an example. All of our kids have a textbook to use in Algebra I, even though there is a digital component to it, and here's why. When we first did that math adoption, that was four and a half years ago, we had hoped to go more towards let's use digital, not give every kid a textbook, including at the elementary level in math. And I don't know if you guys remember that. I worked with part of the board at that time. It didn't work, even though we provided access to students that, right out of the chute, could have online access at schools. In the first few weeks, if there was more than one kid at home that had homework using a digital resource and only one, access to one tool at home, our parents were not at all ready to go digital. We didn't have one-to-one access. And even for those places where we thought maybe we could get by with a class set and not a take-home book, it didn't work if they had a resource at home because both kids wanted to do their homework at the same time and didn't have enough tools. So algebra and geometry, both, we have a hard copy text and there are digital resources. So they could use it online. They didn't want to take their textbook home, but they had the book. The Discovery Ed tech books, those are only an online resource. So that is just for our science classrooms. They have that access. So our teachers at the elementary level, because not every kid has a resource or tool to take home, they're really good at using their smart boards and pulling up the content in that course. Core knowledge, there's both. They have, at kindergarten through second grade, they have a plethora of materials that they're using with the kiddos. And there are online resources for the teachers as well. It's a great question.
May I ask one following question? That makes, I mean, it makes sense to me kind of what the learnings were from a couple of years ago. Is there maybe, though, a different context? Particularly because those first two really are high school level. Is there a different context to really think that through? At least high school, maybe even middle school in terms of truly paperless digital environment?
Yes, and the more resources and tools with the rollout that we have with the next capital override, the more we can get rid of or move to transition to full online learning.
Okay, so it may be a step.
On the tool. You know, and we just ran over it the other day to see Brophy's major space materials. And they are, I believe this is year 11 of having every kid have some sort of access to a tool. And they be eliminated all hard copy library books.
And that's why I was using.
Because they have digital resources. But until they're year 11, and it was, I believe, last year, where they could finally say, we are not dependent on our hard copy books. The transition takes a while.
Okay, thank you.
And industry-wide, probably within five years, textbooks are going to be very minimal. It's going to be all digital.
But can I get along the same lines, Mrs. Kirby?
Wouldn't even five, 10 years from now, our desire to be completely online vary depending on whether we're talking about a first grader versus a 10th grader? Because it's just their comfort level with technology to begin with. So I guess I don't want to, I hope I'm not hearing that we're trying to push everything to online, because that scares me.
Agreed. It scares us, too. I think, and with the standards as they are right now, there's an awful lot of instructional practices that involve kids interacting with their texts, like underlining and highlighting. While you can do that digitally, there are, you know, it's a billion-dollar industry. Our textbook publishers have responded in very smart ways that kids like with the consumable book. The kids can write in it, they can, you know, they can draw code. It's fascinating with respect to ELA and math. And so that piece, I don't think, will get lost in the digital platforms moving forward. And layers, levels, in terms of development of our kiddos, is significant in this conversation as well.
Because, and I've said this many times before, kids are unique individuals and they all learn differently. So one kid is really good at annotating a line and highlighting a line. The very next kid cannot learn that way. And so if we're going to be a district that tries to meet the needs of individual students, we have to have some flexibility with all of this.
And I think Karen just used a key word that we have to remember, consumable. Because I think the base product will be electronic, but then there will always be that consumable workbook for the students and the worksheets and those types of things. So I think that's where it's going to go, is there will be the base electronic instructional material core, but then there will always be that consumable book that every student gets.
Okay, so we had a consumable in something recently. I don't remember what it was.
Pathways is an example. Our elementary math as well.
But the question that I've always wondered is, when we have to keep buying these consumables year after year after year, when you step back and you look back, well, how much did we spend on consumables over a five-year period? Would we have been better off just buying the textbook to begin with?
Great question. And sometimes we would be better off buying the consumable than the online resource, because it's not always that the online resources are super cheap either. They're fairly expensive. So it's balanced. It depends on the vendor that we're talking about and the specific resource, about whether or not the text is more significant, whether the consumables are cheap. We have some fairly inexpensive consumables, like the pathways consumable for our Algebra II kiddos is far less expensive than a text year over year. But over seven years, it'd be cheaper to go with a hard copy text.
And so are those decisions made upfront with the plan? Or are they made three years into it and we say, oh, wow, we should have?
No, they got to be upfront.
They're made upfront. In that specific example, those that generated the pathways materials will say, you can't do that just with a hard copy text. It's very interactive. And that's the one thing that kids tend to say that they like best about it. I like that I can write right in it and my notes are there and it's all comprehensive. It's far more evolved, a comprehensive approach to a consumable than a previous workbook where it was just wrote. It doesn't look like that anymore if it's an effective and quality resource.
Thank you for indulging, because, so this is a seven-year plan. How, knowing that this industry is changing very rapidly, how many, how do I say this? How much of this total curriculum funding and the override, dollar-wise, can be made upfront? How much of, how many of those decisions of this over many millions of dollars can be made in year one for possibly the next three or four years?
Good question.
To lay out the plan for the community to say, we have a very well-thought-out plan to spend your money.
One of the things, I think, in response to the concerns-based adoption model that a person's responded to, we haven't had the, we haven't built in enough opportunities for program evaluations when we do adoptions. And that, moving forward, I think that's really important in our next adoption cycle. We started that last year to say, all right, what do we really have? What worked, what didn't? Versus, you know, we were spoiled. We had a million four for years and people came in saying, ooh, let's start looking at the good stuff. But really even, not really evaluating what we had that might have already been good, we got spoiled. And so last year, we really slowed that down and said, where are our gaps? What do we have? What are our needs? And we were very frugal, because we didn't have a lot of dollars. But here's an example. We'd like to roll out by year again, continue the adoption cycle. We promised our people that last year, social studies, really, social studies and word language didn't get a lot. We focused most on ELA. We promised we'd revisit them first with the next capital override dollars. But to do that by year, math right now, the best resource agreed upon in terms of most evaluations is an open source. And so that's Engage New York moving forward. So we could be looking at math and saying, you know what? We don't have to spend a lot of money. Previously, that was one of our heavy-hitting areas. So the landscape of open source quality resources will change quickly. And so if we can prioritize those items and allocate others, maybe to tier two and tier three, better personalized learning options for our kids that are struggling or that need some more enrichment, that'll be huge moving forward. So it's just changing so quickly. We know we want to go content area by content area, paying attention to what we need and then really look at what's out there, very much considering open source materials.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for help. Glad I had that lifeline. I agree with all of it. Okay, proposed library. So this is our library. And this is working with our library, our lead librarians and working with what they need. So we have digital information and eBooks, innovation, book collection. We do, on the previous capital override, they do a very good job as a whole of equalizing across the schools. They do have some money, which is site-specific to the books that they need for their site. And then the tracking and inventory system, too, so that we make sure they don't get little legs and walk away. Proposed furniture, fixture and equipment are what we call FFNE at $800,000 annually. We have baselines identified by the previous capital override on what the site needs and what they use the dollars for. This, again, is all site allocated. We do do it, again, based off of an ADM. And then the site makes their determination. Things that get bought are student desks, cafeteria tables, whiteboards, court boards. In elementary, you get all your little kindergarten stuff that you put out there and rugs and blocks and all that stuff. But really, this is done at the site, with the site, looking at how they look at their needs for their site. So it's really site-driven on this category. Athletics, very similar to FFNE, is site-driven. Again, an allocation determined by ADM. And the site determines the needs of their staff and their students. Some of the historical items that it funded were uniforms, athletic uniforms, PE equipment and athletic items. Obviously, on the elementary side, it's a little bit more of PE and those kinds of things. When you get up into the high schools, it's supporting a lot of their sports needs and their PE needs all at the same time. Playground equipment and code compliance. This is a category that really is getting now to only mostly kind of a maintained category. We've done a lot of work over the past seven years of putting, of replacing the elementary and the site playground equipment. So really here is, it's taking a look at the type and age of the equipment at the site. Again, over the past seven years, we've replaced a lot of it. But again, we still have to look at the age of the equipment because of the safety nature of this equipment. There's deadline dates that you have to replace it. We've done shade structures and will continue to do shade structures throughout the district. Changes in code annually. Codes change. How far, how far a swing can be from another swing? How far, how much on the height of a slide? How much the landing pad has to be? All this stuff you never thought that would be so important to a playground is really important. So we need some dollars there to keep up with some of those code changes. Lifespan of the equipment and the landing surface. You know, even though maybe the equipment might last for 20, 30 years, the rubber and the landing spot needs to be replaced on a regular basis in a timeframe that building services works very hard to keep up and make sure that they replace that at the proper time.
And that includes bat stops and all of those things on our ball fields. A lot of those areas that our fields get used by a whole bunch of community folks. And we have to keep all that fence and equipment in good order. Any discussion? Any questions? I know we already had some discussion, but more than happy to have more discussion or answer any questions.
And Mrs. Kirby?
I just had a few suggestions. We talked as a board recently about how to engage the community. The times we live in, you have to put fences up and a lot of security and it is what it is. And we must do that for safety of our students. But what it tends to do is keeps our community out. So a couple of suggestions. I'm always looking for opportunities of how we can, in these ballot initiatives, get support and ownership by the voters and starting with their own parents. And it's often with what is, what are you going to get? What is your child going to get? What is your teacher going to get? And it's often hard to do, particularly when you're talking about curriculum, because that's beyond what most parents, you know, they're very found-by oriented. But on the fine arts and the performing arts slide that you had, if there's a way to break that down now as much as possible on which site is going to get what? So the Swaroj is going to get lights. Whether that was a hot button, maybe they got it, I don't know. You know, all the high school auditoriums are going to get new curtains, whatever that means. Break that down so that the community says, okay, I know this is coming. And then along the same lines on the $800,000 that you were talking about, I forget what the slide title was. We just know it's $800,000, that one? And you said site-based allocations. You said something about what do the teachers need? The teachers are often the first to very publicly say, I have to spend so much money out of my own pocket but to get my classroom ready every year? Well, can we begin to, can we use this to change that? To say, you know what? You've been spending, you know, whatever, $350 out of your own pocket to get your classroom up and running every year. This, with this override passing, that will no longer be needed. We are going to alleviate that financial pressure from the teachers. It's just an idea that I would throw out. But it's, I would just encourage you guys to look for a level of specificity and discretion in these big dollar amounts to make it very meaningful to every child, every teacher, so that they embrace it and they own it and they advocate for it.
Can I ask a piggyback clarifying question on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that from the back row here. Dan, can we go back to the Fine Arts slide?
I can find it.
So when we talk about establishing that baseline and clarifying what sites will need, that's kind of what we were thinking about doing is, and we've talked about involving principals and our department chairs. And Mike Miller will be essential in that, too. What is it that our department chairs and Fine Arts and Performing Arts teachers believe is absolutely essential in an auditorium? And who doesn't have it? And then clarifying that to say, these are, every school will get to have these things, either bond or override. either bond or override, teasing out which piece goes in which. And then, here's the additional things that your site would get to have based on what you need. Do you need uniform replacements? Who hasn't had that? So the balance between, if we just do the ADM thing, they didn't get to do some of the bigger picture things that they needed to do. And so that balance between, let's do a baseline, let's prioritize and tease out what it is that everybody's going to get. And then, in fairness, we've got some PTOs that are going to go bells and whistles above and beyond that, and that's okay. But baseline, everybody will have this as a result of this, and then here's the other things you get as a result of that. That's kind of what we're hoping it looks like.
And I love that because it is a methodical approach that's easily explainable and defensible to the community, where you have one school saying, well, I didn't get that, well, here's why. Here's the approach we took. And then, I'm getting excited, because what I can also now envision is you have, at the end of the day, with the bond and the override, you can say, well, here's what Kokopah is going to get, and here's what Tavon's going to get, and you can make it very specific by school.
So people will buy it.
And they have buy-in, that they...
Well, they can relate to it. I remember the very first thing we bought with capital override for Swaro was a grand piano for the auditorium.
And they loved it.
And, because Galen Cutnick and I went around, and we went all over, and she played a ton of pianos. And we finally found one that was a US-made one that was custom, and I got it for about a third of the price. And it's a $70,000 piano.
Don't touch it, because she will freak out.
Oh, yeah? Because, and she thought I was crazy at first when I told her about this model. After she went and played it, she was like, I gotta have that. But I remember that was, and so those are the types of things that people relate to that say, that's what I want, so I will support it because of that.
Right. Exactly.
Mrs. Prober? I did kind of a question in that area. We talk about, like, the school needs this, this school needs that. And one of the things I've heard come up is the idea of, especially at the high school level, you have one school that has a very strong band program or a strong orchestra program. That question of equity gets a little fuzzy because, you know, okay, every school, high school has this many violins, but this school actually needs, you know, 20% more because of the size of program. How do we as a district make that efficient and make sure that the programs have what they need? And that's, therein lies the equity, not necessarily you all have the same number.
I'll take that one from the sense of, even though we allocated the last override by ADM, the departments came together and talked about some of those higher-level needs on those things. For instance, athletics. Obviously, Desert Mountain Chaperone got more dollars because of the number of students and things. But they said, you know what, all the schools need to have those gators, the little tractors that go out. So they all pooled their money, and they paid more than the other folks to make sure everybody had those. We went to some of the high schools for performing arts and said, there are certain things that every school needs. We didn't get down to the individual numbers of instruments. Mike Miller's, I think, playing with that one right now. But there was, there were some common needs that they said we all need to have. So they said, we will contribute, because we get more money, we'll contribute that to the piece of that pie so that everybody can have those. So they had those discussions within themselves, which I thought was great, because now they supported each other. And I also thought it was great, because now if they have something they need to borrow from somebody, they don't feel bad asking because they all helped. Whereas before, it was like, that's mine, I'm not going to let you borrow it, because if you break it, I'm stuck with it. So I've seen some of that collaboration really work pretty good, and I think it's even getting better, and Mike's working on that now.
And it's a pretty extraordinary example, because it was contentious at first when we talk about program-specific resources or site-specific resources. But the elementaries have led a really good example of being collaborative with a centralized depository of instruments. And so we had 20 violins, maybe that weren't used at one place, and we had a few sites that didn't have any, and their kids couldn't play. And so even if they were gifted by parent groups, they were coded and stuff, so we keep track of that. But they've been, this is the first year, they've really tried to take care of kids and share. So that's been a huge change. We made a promise, we would keep track of what's been gifted where, so that we don't lose things. We do a nice job of that. That's significant. And you speak to another important point, too, because whereas one high school may not have a really thriving band at the minute, they may have tech theater that the other campuses don't have. And so it's a choice where they chose to prioritize, and I think that's okay. But we have to allow, that's why that economy for the ADM, for them to choose where their priorities are and the leftover dollars, I think is really, really important. But the messaging for that, Board Member Prober, is really significant, because we do have some parents that challenge, wait a minute, why don't they have as much of a band? And so we have to be very thoughtful about where those dollars are going to, why that other program is thriving, and that's been a choice by the site. Really important messaging.
And exactly, and taking a look at that sensitivity to those booster clubs, to those parent groups that have gifted things. I have no doubt there is some ownership there that you have to be sensitive to. So that's terrific. Thank you.
Could that decision-making process that you just described, and that's somewhat up here, could that be just put on one piece of paper of, here's, here's the process by which these kinds of decisions are made? So that when you do get an email from a parent who believes their school needs more drums, you can say, well, this is how the process works, and it's defensible? As opposed to rumors and people talking to different people and getting different, you know, different answers and feeling like they never got their question answered? Because it sounds like there is one, just put it on paper, a document.
I'm not sure the principals message that to begin with. I don't know.
In the elementary, no kid goes more than 48 hours without an instrument in elementary.
Well, I'm talking about instruments.
Yeah, I know, but yeah. How do the principals navigate that when, when the PTA comes in and says, where's all the instruments that we donated, or we don't have enough instruments? So that's good.
But we can get some guidelines and practices set so that people could see it.
Just the funding process is what I'm really referring. How is it, what you talked about, what you started this conversation with, what are the needs? How do we get everyone equitable and then go from there?
And use what else you have, and you get to prioritize based on that.
Yes.
Good, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
We now have the longest presentation.
This is a quick review.
Believe it or not, Hannah and Michelle got us to one slide.
Michelle, come back. No, she left me.
She was due.
That's okay. We merely are just bringing back an overview. It was requested back in a, for a meeting in the fall to take a look at what does the contract process look like and to lay it out, and do we want to get some adjustments? So this is just bringing back what the process looks like for contracts, making changes in the language for administrators and certify. And the process, past process was really the top three bullets. So we review the contract language from other districts. So Michelle Marshall will take a look, will take a look at, and she's back, will take a look at what are other districts doing, what are outside attorneys saying are going into the contract language. So we review that every year. We take a look at, are there changes in state statutes? Are there changes in our policies? Or are there current realities, where there's some budgets, realities that we needed to address within the contract, or where there's some staffing realities we need to address? The superintendent leadership team then takes a look at what some of those changes are, and then we would send the contract out. What we've added for the spring and moving forward are the next two bullets. We've already met once with the association presidents from the administrator and the certified employee groups, and we said we're going to come back together in the spring, and any language adjustments that we believe are necessary, we'll get feedback on it from them, and we'll work as a group to what that looks like. And then we also said that we'll, before we actually send the contracts out, we'll actually do an email highlighting the differences. So it's clear within, prior to them even going, that this is what's changing. So notify all employees that have a contract of, here's what was different from last year's contract to this year's contract. And then we send the contracts out. We always like to send out early May if possible, depends on budget. This year, we're going to have to negotiate that with the election in May, is after when we typically send out contracts. So we'll have to work with the association presidents and see what might that language look like dependent on the ballot initiative. So that is what the process looks like. That's the changes that we've started making already, and the changes that we're going to move forward with those changes as far as looping in and notifying what the differences look like. Any questions?
Mrs. Kirby? Could you elaborate? I don't, I didn't understand what you were talking about, early May, but might change depending on ballot initiative. I just wasn't tracking what you meant.
So when we look at, we have the election that's coming up in May that could affect salaries. So we're just going to have to see how that might be worded within the contract, dependent on that election result.
Gotcha. I'm with you now.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Jackson?
This looks terrific, Dr. Sutton. And I think communication is sometimes where we, you know, in any organization, that's a hard thing. And so this is wonderful. I think it would alleviate tension miscommunications down the road, so I applaud this.
Thank you very much.
I was going to say, there was more on this.
Wasn't there another?
No.
Wasn't there a now line?
He just said questions. Oh, you had a... There was an email that went out to all staff back in October that you also...
I didn't see it in our board book.
There was a list of liquidated damages.
It was not about the process. That we sent just as an update to what was sent with the staff regarding that topic, but not about the process.
That was part of the board book, like, we were going to talk about it today.
It's in the board... That was not...
In the board book, there was a liquidated summary.
Did I put something in there that you didn't tip in?
Well, that was a review of what we sent to the staff, just as a board update from a Friday update, but was not part of the process for contracts. So I don't know if it got, that was a Friday update that was sent, Sandra.
Oh, oh. It made it in our presentation.
Oh, okay. All right. Can we talk about it then, since it's agendocized? I mean, it's in the presentation.
Is that part of the process? Is it agenda? Well, it's in the, well, the agenda is the process, but Michelle...
I know, I have a question about this process used to finalize the language regarding that.
If we have it?
It was included, it was included in our packet, so I don't...
Ask the question. We're hearing much more of this question.
Well, I guess we...
Mrs. Herlinger?
Yeah, and I don't have it pulled up. As far as the final decisions, or at least when I read it through board book, it's my understanding that the language regarding liquidated damages, there was a summary, like a breakout of dates and amounts, the kind of graduated fee schedule, or I don't even know.
Graduated called fee structure.
A fee structure. How, I guess one of my questions coming in today was, how in this process was that And when and how and with what stakeholder groups was the problem, the issue really defined and financially broken out so as to kind of justify the amounts? And I mean, I guess I just wanted to understand in more detail how this process was truly applied into kind of reassessing that liquidated damages situation that really, in my opinion, did feel very miscommunicated, that the process was not strong at all. And so I was just trying to combine, put together the two.
Sure. Board Member Prober. The sheet that you received was worked on with the president of SEA and the president of SAA. In fact, the president of SEA is who brought the sample that had it broken out that way. And I believe Julie Sanowski handed out to you the day of that liquidated damages agenda item on it. She actually brought it and shared it with the group that day. So it just had a fee schedule broken down, one of the samples that she found. And so that group looked at, what does that look like? What should it look like for us? And really talked about it based on staffing concerns. If we're trying to staff a position, obviously, the longer we get, you know, closer we are to school starting, the harder it's going to be to fill that position with a quality person. So the fee went up on that. But it was really just a sample that, from another district, that the presidents looked at and agreed to. And then we sent it out to the staff back, I think in October, notifying them that here's what the group, we worked with the SEA president, the SAA president, here's the language agreements that we came to. In there was also some changes directly in the contract language, too. So if you recall, there were changes that came up that they thought it connected 301 and, so we already, we changed that language already on that sheet to make sure it was very clear it was not an and that we were talking about. It wasn't liquidated damage and 301. So we made sure that that language has already been cleared up. Michelle was also part of that meeting, so that we had the contract language. That's already ready to go for next year and changed.
Okay. And so basically, these stakeholder groups, they've already basically approved what will be coming out to employees regarding this change? That's already...
We only meant to make changes for next year's contract on that one topic of liquidated damages. So we'll meet again in the spring after we see, does the election dependant need to change something in the contract? Or is there anything new out there that we might need to add? We'll get together back with the presidents again and with Michelle to talk about what's new out there, what do we need to put in there with the election coming up, and work through that group again. The presidents and Michelle and I only met about liquidated damages this fall, but we're studying the process that we get together early spring, January, February, take a look at what's going on, what might need to change, and work on it at that timeframe. The fall timeframe was really kind of playing catch-up from last spring to clarify and to make improvements.
Sorry, that's what I was trying to understand. Since this change was not highlighted prior to last spring's contract renewals, it's going to be this time, is correct?
Yes, yes. Even though we've already sent it out once, we'll send it out again in this email. Yes, absolutely. We talked about that, too.
And stakeholder groups that have, are comfortable with all of this?
Yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Kirby? Okay. Process. So I think this is a true statement that based upon statute and our current board policies, board approval is not required on contracts to certify for classified employees. This is just the generic. What's, our approval is required for just the issuance, but not the contract language itself.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Okay. So how do we, as an organization, work through and get comfortable, so that everyone's comfortable with contract language changes that certain stakeholder groups may take exception to? Or, and back to the communication we talked about, to letting that bubble up and be vetted out with knowing that we have no role to play in that? Or is that just, how do other districts handle it?
Other districts, many other districts do it the way we do. Other districts do it, I think, more specifically. What I mentioned back when we talked about liquidated damages last time was that if the board wants to have that discussion and wants to look at specific language every time, that's your option to have that discussion, decide that you want to see every language change. That's your option to do that. You can have that discussion, decide that that's what you, how you want to proceed, and we will proceed that way. It's really up to you.
So we need to, if we want to have that conversation about whether or not we want to see that, we need to agendocize that conversation?
I would say that's pretty, that's a lot more specific than what we have for today.
Right. Okay. So then back to then, this, today. So how are we going, do you know yet, Dr. Sutton, how we're going to, based upon the timeline you just laid out, January, February, you're going to get back with SEA, you're going to agree? But then we've got this May election out there. Are you going to have another meeting with SEA in late May, early June? Or are you going to put like a contingency clause? Do you have any idea yet?
Yeah. Board Member Kirby, my guess is that we'll write some contingency language based on, and we'll either do similar directly in the contract or MOU with SAA and SEA.
Okay.
So depending on what our recommendation is coming out of legal, to what that looks like for that election.
Okay. Thank you. That's good. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is future items, boards make proposed topics for future consideration. Mr. Jackson?
I'm asking everybody to hold to me for just one minute. I'll be quick. It's two minutes, actually. Been quite a week for everybody, and I didn't, I'm speaking for myself as a board member, not the board. But I felt I needed to say something with the current situation. I know Dr. Peterson made public his intention to take early retirement, and I just wanted to address that real quickly. First thing I wanted to say to the team is, I've been very clear along with majority of the board that we do not want Dr. Peterson to do this. In fact, I sincerely hope he reconsiders and stays on through at the end of his contract. Dr. Peterson has been, in my opinion, an outstanding superintendent. He is the hardest-working man I know. He has been a positive, thoughtful, and very effective leader of this district through some very difficult times the last few years. And I think his thoughtful, positive leadership is one reason we are where we are today, which I think is in a very good place, considering where we were a couple of years ago. We've had our funding restored, maintained our A rating, we just hired 70 brand-new teachers. I think we have a very bright future in this school district, and I think Dr. Peterson's strong leadership has been instrumental in getting us here. Having said that, I of course respect Dr. Peterson's decision and will support him in any way I can. And I do want to say also that the leadership team here, I believe in this district, we're very fortunate to have outstanding senior leadership. Our undeniable success in student achievement, especially during these difficult times, I think is a testament to our leadership. Obviously, teachers are what, at the end of the day, do this, but they can't do their job without outstanding leadership. And I think, I know everybody in this room, and I personally believe each and every one of our SL team members is dedicated, qualified, and we're truly fortunate to have you on our team. And I did want to say, Dr. Peterson's decision to take early retirement is undoubtedly making people nervous. That's going to happen when you have changes like this. And as one board member, you know, I just, that is to be expected. There has been some comments about Dr. Peterson about a less-than-ideal, frankly, a difficult working environment, and I want to be careful here, of course. It's well-known, I think it's known in this room, that we are going to be moving forward to look into this, and that is absolutely appropriate and needs to be done. I think this board, I think, I speak for the board when I say, we certainly want everybody in this district to have a positive, supportive work environment. And so this needs to be, starting from the top down, we need to take this seriously, and we are. And we need to know what's going on, and the truth needs to be, needs to be discovered, of course, and that's, everybody wants that. So I guess I want to leave, end with, I'm asking everybody in this room, this entire leadership team, to please continue to do the great work you do every day. Keep coming in, supporting teachers and students. Your work is far too important to too many people to let what's going on at this, at the board level distract you from your daily work. the board level distract you from your daily work. Let the board manage the transition at the superintendent level. Keep doing your job, please keep coming in every day. We will get this, we will get through this transition. It's a sad thing, a very sad thing, in my opinion, but we will emerge from this strong and unified if we can all, everybody can come in and keep doing their job like you always do. Too many people count on you as a team. So anyway, thank you for indulging me.
Well, kind of along that line, one of the, because we're just supposed to do topics at this point, but there will be a plan announced for the superintendent replacement in the process for the investigation is all, it's, that will be a topic for future, for future consideration. We will be talking about those things very soon. Other topics for future consideration? Mrs. Kirby?
Yes. It's board consideration of contract language changes for certified, classified and administrative personnel. Did I get everyone? Are those the three contracts? Yeah. Certified, classified and administrative personnel. Clear?
So at this time, we'll look at item five and vote to convene an executive session for the purposes of, A, discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the board to consider the board's position and to instruct its representatives regarding negotiations for the purchase, sale or lease of real property located at 3811 North 44th Street, Phoenix, Arizona, 85018 pursuant to ARS 38-31.0387. And B, discussion or consultation with the attorney or attorneys of the board for legal advice and to consider its position and instructions and instruct its attorneys regarding the board's position regarding contracts that are subject of negotiations with respect to item...
Six.
Six.
Six A.
Oh, six A above pursuant to, I was looking up at the other part, pursuant to ARS 43-431.0383 and four.
It's actually pursuant to ARS 38-431, but I'll second that.
Did I say six again?
No, you said 43-431.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. I'll vote in favor, please, and we keep by saying aye.
Aye.
My motion passes by zero.